Good evening. I'd like to call our board study session to order. So we'll start with a board member roll call. Jenricambo?
Here.
Grace Lehman?
Here.
Marissa Casterdus?
Here.
How you want to move is here. And Jeanette Sampson is out tonight.
So item two is science and health curriculum adoption update. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Park. She has the presentation for you.
Thanks.
Okay, so I'm just going to give you an update on my curriculum adoptions for this year. So next slide. We have two adoptions going on this year. We have the science adoption K-12 because we postponed it last year because of the ELA adoption, literacy adoption for K-5. And then health adoption is the current adoption according to the state's adoption schedule. So we're looking at health adoption K-12 as well. Next slide. So I'll just start with the science adoption. This is Oregon's vision for the science adoption. So Oregon's vision of what it means to be proficient in science rests on a new science, it's both a body of knowledge and an evidence-based model. And so they're looking at theory building that continually extends through positive values knowledge. And then the next slide has the vision that the adoption committee created specifically for Astoria School District. So at Astoria, we strive to develop scientific learners that have a general understanding of critical thinking and world concepts. And so we like to look at it as what does this mean for students? This means students have proof of seekers, they use background knowledge, they're going to develop vocabulary, they want the students' work to be developmentally appropriate, applied depth of knowledge. With science, you really want students to be curious and wonder, using real-world applications. They really want them to make personal connections with scientific exploration, and we really want them engaged in this activity. So using the vision to kind of guide us in the growth of the curriculum process. So basically, we're kind of looking at three different things based on grade level. So elementary, we met last week to review print materials, and we've got some online data sites. And then I just planned two presentations next week for a couple of programs they were super interested in. And then we'll kind of see what those presentations are like, see if we want to... We're still waiting on some print samples. There are some print samples back there if you're curious. There are still a few companies that we haven't gotten the print materials for. So we're just kind of in this middle phase of looking at materials, looking at presentations, possibly highly maybe something in the spring. We are looking for a curriculum that's super flexible and has scheduling options because with the new CKLA curriculum, there's not a lot of time for science at the elementary level. There's a little more time at Lewis &amp; Clark than there was at Auster. Auster's time is actually a bit more limited for science. So a lot of the new science curriculum are super flexible. But if you have a lot of time, you know, teach these lessons. If you have a little bit of time, teach these lessons. So they're really conscious of that. Lots of hands-on activities because CKLA has so much science and social studies in it already. The teachers are like, okay, let's do some like reading on some long-type science. And we're really looking for that culturally responsive curriculum as well. So elementary, we're still in the searching phase. Middle school has been highly style school year. We had a style coach come in and spend a day with them, modeling some lessons, talking with them about the curriculum. So so far, that seems to be their, you know, the way we want to go with. And then the high school has been kind of being established for biology, I think it was environmental science, do you know that or earth science? This year, I think they seem really welcome with this one curriculum. So I feel like those high schools pretty much decided what they would like to present to you for adoption, but elementary is kind of still in the works. So this is kind of our timeline for science. We're really just looking at presentations in March, April. Do we want to pilot? Do we want possibly business schools that are already implementing, one of the ones we're interested in, hoping to present proposals to you for your approval? And then we can kind of get what's going and get orders so that we can implement it in the fall. What's some of the questions on the health or the science adoption regarding the health?
How do they, how does like know the high school, like from a curriculum standpoint, like, and concept-wise, like do they online? Like, they're learning different things in middle school that will give them the basis for what they need to know?
Middle school is more of like a second integrated approach.
Right.
They don't say like, you have to teach these in sixth grade, these in seventh grade, these in eighth grade. They're like, these are the middle school standards. They can kind of, you can choose. Whereas if the high school is more of like, it's more specific. So they do, they all align with the state standards.
Correct.
Yeah, they were all a little bit. So health adoption, this is Oregon's vision for health. So health education and visions that all students have the health knowledge and skills they need to meet their goals. For our strike, thank you. So this they're looking at, we mentioned for health, a lot of the areas. And then we also, the health committee also made a petition for us. So looks similar to the other ones, kind of a similar format. In our health classrooms, we strive for a strength-based approach. That was a big one for the team that provides students with the health leaders they needed to be productive members of society. So what does that mean for our students? It means they understand the connection between research and... Want to make informed decisions that impact their health throughout their lives, as we're preparing them for a healthy life. And then teachers will use an evidence-based curriculum that is grounded in better cognitive accuracy. So we're looking for a curriculum that's really accurate, and that updates continually based on that current information. And then teachers are using skill-based instruction and equitable, including semi-cultural response. So the biggest focus is really around strength-based, accurate, you know, that continually updated. And we're looking for an aging group. These are the cross-cutting concepts that are in the standards that ODE has for health. So the transformative socially-emotional learning standards is something that's interwoven throughout the health standards, as well as the student success plans. So health standards connect, assess the plans by setting standards that focus on strengths, values, and goals, to define what health means to them. And then also tribal history, shared history. So they've kind of got these three concepts that are future woven into the health standards. These are the options we're looking at. Don't have any, the chart is directed from what I've looked through in my office. There's not a lot approved by ODE for K-10, it's basically the Great Body Shop, which is what we currently have in K-5. That was the only one we could find. That doesn't mean we can't adopt something else independently, but there's really not a lot out there in the K-5 health. Six to eight, there's a few different ones, Live Well, the Great Body Shop, and Good Heart will cause this one that we have really liked so far. And then teen health by, I mean, the raw deal is, was not approved, but we could do an independent adoption. And then nine through 12 grade, it was kind of limited, Live Well and... So we've had all our presentations on these curriculum. We are kind of, just kind of looking at which ones we might want to pilot possibly in the fall. We're also looking at, which I forgot to add to this, I apologize, we're also looking at, I guess, the old curriculum for our counselors, because our counselors teach a lot of the health standards through school. So we've been looking at weight finder and character strong, we could, two could be looked at. So kind of be a combination of health curriculum for the teachers to use, but also health curriculum for the counselors to use. And that kind of builds up that seed of making students... That says science, but it really helps. So basically, we started in November, we met, we created our vision. December, we reviewed the different curricula, we chose the ones we wanted to review and to schedule presentations. January, we did our vendor presentations. I currently am right now asking that those, what does your pilot process look like? How long can we pilot for, things like that? To look for possibly piloting a unit within people. And then hopefully again, for next year, maybe. A lot of this is really going to be questions to present. We did one year, those were on science because of the new land option, so science would come first this year budget-wise, and then health name. If we have to put health off for a year, then we can always do a, you know, a, so this is all...
I have a question.
Yes.
So, how concerned are we with standards changing with federal money being tied to standards or something like that? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
The standard?
Having a curriculum that matches standards now, is there a potential of some of those standards changing within health curriculum?
Not that I've heard.
In a minute.
Yeah, and typically, the health standards are revised every, for the adoption. So the health standards we have now, we've currently revised within the last couple of years, like just, they kind of do before the adoption process. I haven't heard anything about it constantly changing, but that is a possibility.
Because, yeah, feeling like there's just a lot of unknowns.
I haven't really...
Tied to federal funding and how that would, if something like this, and, yeah.
And I think because curriculum adoption is a state, is a state thing, that it's not issued by law. That's probably... The other thing I forgot to put on here too is we'll be opening up to the public, particularly what that should be for, for a couple to kind of review materials and feedback. Um, next slide, Marissa, I'm sure, is it just questions? Oh, this is the evaluation tool that we're using as part of the board call. See, we have to have a, the evaluation tool that we're using. And this one's really just looks at, it aligns the standards, gives scope and sequence, is it, you know, appropriate, culturally responsive. It's just kind of a checklist of things that we look at to make sure that, you know, evaluating before we can define a decision. Any other questions? We'll be coming back to you, open a couple ones with proposals. I'm just going to keep standing.
Thank you. Okay, item number three, integrated guidance information.
This is a big one. So we did this a couple of years ago, the integrated guidance was new. So it's, consists of the 25, 27, integrated application tool. So the context of this presentation will include just the purpose of the presentation, I'll give you some background and context, talk about the planning team, plan inputs, I'll give you a review of the planning later, next episode. So the purpose for this presentation is to share what was prioritized in the plan. We did collect a lot of input and use that if we prioritized. We'll explain how this guidance was developed. It's also to hear additional feedback on the plan, help them get control, and to see for people of our plan. So background on the integrated guidance in a couple of years, if people are curious, it was in response to requests from educational leaders and state legislators to kind of frame all these different brands into one place and into one application. So it combined processes for community engagement, needs assessments, planning budgeting for nine different programs, all into one application. It was designed to reduce curricular redundancies and improve the framework, which is communication. So we take these five programs, and now they're using the same indicators to, that's what I'm saying. So that's kind of the path I'm taking for the guidance. The state said they must build goals into the entire educational system to elastic just about all the time. Next slide. Here. Okay, so these are the nine programs that are part of the integrated guidance. It wasn't as many a couple of years ago. They, so basically, the idea is, I'm just going to rephrase this, is saying about this. So integration is possible for these initiatives because of what they are common. The guidance brings them together so applicants, regions, schools, and preference can leverage multiple strategies and funding sources to implement more cohesive plans that positively impact students. So through the integrated application process, the outcomes and strategies for each initiative will continue to come together into a single strategic plan that supports the common goal. And the aim is to build these goals into the entire educational system, to embed the work at all levels and ensure sustainability. And part of the focus is common engagement of local student groups, as we collected information and went through the planning process. So the next few slides will kind of go through each one of these, but you see, oh, sorry, that's okay, we go back to some. So the top three, you can see are like embedded programs. So they'll talk about the kind of embedded throughout. And then you can see our targeted programs at the bottom. But then the graphic is really showing you that these all have some common goals, which are well-rounded education, equity advance, engaged community, strength in systems and capacity. So we're going to talk about these on the next few slides. So these were the top three that they said were embedded into the process, which is continues to improve the planning, which is just a process involved in collaboration or to improve outcomes for students. Everyday Matters is really around student engagement, school culture, private safety, and then career connected learning is around career awareness, exploration, those types of things. Next slide. These are the targeted programs are part of the, so high school success, which aims at improved graduation rates and quality readiness. Student investment account, which focuses on students' mental health, behavioral needs, along with increased achievement, reduce disparities among local groups. And then we have the early indicator intervention system, which is kind of this picture. And then the next slide, early literacy grant is now incorporated into the integrated process. That's the one that we use to approach the curriculum. Brings birth through kindergarten, kindergarten for motherhood grant. Then we also have career technical education, and then federal school improvement if you have a, a comprehensive support or targeted support. So our planning team members, like one of our strategic planning, they've opened up a lot of the work we did initially around, a couple of years ago, was around strategic plan. So including that in process, as well as recently district administrative, other instructional features, community members that kind of informed that, pretty much, the very information. There were a lot of required things for the planning process, but I'm just going to kind of focus off of them. So focus on use of equity lens. I'm going to spend quite a bit of time on our community engagement that we completed, and then I'll talk about the needs assessment that we did, and that is potential for that to help students. So our equity lens, as you were all, we have our equity statement. The strategic plan that buys like videos and quality being fair, the creation of policies and the practice, which our opinions are not directed by any of the cookie. And then we have our equity lens questions. And really, that's just to make sure that we are not marginalizing or harming students, staff or families, and the decisions that we're making. We did quite a bit of community engagement starting in December. And I'll, I'll share some of the themes and information we gleaned from these community engagement opportunities. But, but this is the first year we've done story circles, and we actually really enjoyed them and got a bit of information out of them. We did story circles with, we had K-12 parents, we had 18 parents in that family, that story circle. We also, I toured all the, the Bible parent circle, the seven parents. We did one with 18 middle school students. And then we did one in the high school and one in your ACA with 34 students. We also completed empathy interviews. So K-12 parents, including our local group parents, Travis helped with that, and did special education parents, parents of children in tag, receiving title services, and then just general education parents. We have their responses for that. And then administrative teams did middle and high school student empathy interviews. I mean, I think it's seven of those. And then we also recently did a staff survey with 134 responses there. And then the seed survey was newly required in the spring this year. Student, who else? Student Educational Equity Development Survey, and we had 818 responses. So I'll share some of that with that. So here's some highlights from the story circles and the interviews. And I want to thank AI for helping me through this process, which took a lot of information and really... Overall themes were, this came from parents and students together, around community and belonging. So around friendship, social connections, social connections in that positive school environment, supportive inclusivity, so support for diversity and students feeling accepted and respected. Parent and community involvement was a big theme, effective communication between school and home, academic support and providing that, creating that positive school experience. The students really spoke a lot about engaging and enjoyable activities, things that they really liked about, you know, classes and extracurricular activities and things like that. But then there was also some, you know, challenges and stressors that were brought up, health issues, transportation, social emotional factors, thing like that. My graphic there is of the like, of, you know, business on one side, burn on the other side, kind of thing, because it was really this, this strong thing of, well, I really think school should be academic, and I didn't want to conso, but it's really also that we learn social skills and life skills. So you, like, we heard that from both sides, students and students. Next slide. Some highlights from the staff survey, satisfaction with job. We have, these are the top one is certified respondents, and then the, remember if it is classified. So you can see I have 56 certified people responding, 39 classified staff respond, but overall, the satisfaction rate was about 70%. Support for supervisors and administrators, again, a, and a high 70%. Satisfaction with professional learning opportunities, looks like we have some work to do there. And then student engagement, 63% of certified respondents felt students were engaged or barely engaged, and a similar amount from classified staff. So we did ask them kind of well-open-ended questions on the staff survey as well, a lot of links around to enjoy most of our working in our district. Some of the common themes that came out were supporting community and environment, especially stat that was supported by administrators, colleagues, and the community in general. The support of atmosphere is invaluable and contributes to job satisfaction. One was collaboration and teamwork. So it's from relationships that we build together as a staff. Teamwork with colleagues was essential. Staff appreciate the sense of community and the ability to work together to navigate challenges and improve their practices. Some of that probably coming out of hard, maybe with these time that teachers have with their, their teams. The third one, working with students and student engagement, so staff find great joy, which is a good thing to hear, interacting with students, helping them develop skills and see that progressing more. This engagement with students is a significant resource to develop location, just made a lot of staff in the survey brought benefits from recent marketing and social commitment, and then making a positive impact, so they enjoy being positive role models, they enjoy different things. And then the last one, what do they enjoy most about working in, it's professional development and autonomy. So, which is a little bit of a disconnect with what we saw earlier with the percentage of PD, but this one, some of the comments were that the district commitment to providing quality training and professional development is appreciated, but also the teachers value the autonomy, the flexibility that they have, and their classrooms to meet that needs of that piece. Another question was, what are the challenges in your job? Some of the things that came up, and I'm sure this is not news, is student behavior. So they highlighted some of the challenges of managing behaviors in the classroom, which can sometimes be a difficult to make a good use of learning environment. They also talked about engagement and motivation. So many students struggle with short attention spans, lack of interest in the material, and there's other external factors that kind of affect their willingness to participate. Another challenge was support and resources. A big one that came up was need for more support staff. We did, I took some of our, you know, social assistance and support staff, that had a difference. They find that to be, that cuts to support and resource to be a significant challenge. Teachers would like more instructional assistance, more training and more resources to meet the needs of their students. So that's a common thread. The fourth one is consistency in implementing behavior plans. They felt there was a need for clear systems and trained staff to develop and implement the behavior support plans. Inconsistent formation of behavior plans is having an effect on classroom management. And they talked about consistency in handling behaviors. This is really like a work for street work. And then they know that some of the external factors, such as the family support, climate access, and autism, and other societal pressures that are impacting students' future. And then the last one is around what changes or recommendations would the staff like to see? Again, coming up again, so common theme of that pressure of well-trained training. They specifically want more PD around behavior management and smaller form approaches. And over the years, I've heard a lot about specific to their instruction, that, what the teenagers are raising with their app. That's, that's a continuous theme. The other one was support and resources. Again, they increase support staff and resources, more assistive time in classrooms and additional support staff. So that can have pretty good communication and inclusion. Improved communication and inclusion are important for both teachers and classified staff. They would like regular meetings, more interactive communication, inclusion is just a decision that you process. Recognition was our fourth one. Teachers and classified staff would like more recognition. They want their efforts to be acknowledged and reviewed. And then the last one was around collaboration and support. Though more opportunities to collaborate support are designed by both groups. Time to discuss challenges, share ideas, and support each other in that space. The question before I move on to the seed survey about the staff survey, you need to share some from? These highlights are from the seed survey that the students took. This is the longer, we have 818 students. This is grades three through eleven that can participate in the survey. This is from the Northwest Regional EST kind of consolidating, because the seed surveys is huge, they're being included. They created these charts for us around how they felt were the overall strengths of the Astoria School District based on survey responses. So at the bottom, it says some of our strengths were access to learning resources, opportunities to learn, well-rounded education, self-efficacy, sense of belonging, extracurricular engagement, and then career and technical education. So I'm going to focus in on a few of these. The gray ones at the top are skip, because the students don't have to answer every question. If they, if they're like, I don't like this, we'll leave you to skip. So the green is positive, the red is negative, or the, the gray is just, they just didn't want to answer it. Which kind of affects those percentages a little bit, because it wasn't all 818 kids that answered that one question, so. The next slide shows specifically around self-efficacy, some of the strengths, and you can see in the little box that says, for ELA, which is this one here, that's third, sixth, and ninth grade that answered that one. And then math is fourth, seventh, and 10th grade, and then science is fifth, the 11th grade. But it kind of shows especially in ELA, a large percentage of students answered the question, how confident are you that you can complete core tasks in ELA? They feel pretty good about that. And then even in math, we're seeing pretty high rates of self-efficacy, and then science is a little bit lower. But this was one of our areas of strength overall, was self-efficacy. And then sense of belonging, since this part of our strategic plan, I thought I would share how our students are feeling about sense of belonging in our district. I felt like overall, we have pretty good scores on this one, especially on, you can see the two columns where nobody skipped a question, and we scored pretty well. 92% of students said they have friends at school. 92% of students said they have friends at school. 90% of them said adults in our district care about them. So I felt like those were really positive results. 78% said it's a thing to talk to adults in my school. And 68% are saying adults like being at school. So I felt like this showed a good sense of belonging in our district.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So the second, I know that it's listed as a strength, but the second lowest score on the strength was access to learning resources. Do you have any indication as like what they were asking in specific about with that? That's a concerning number to me. Like, is that like textbooks? Is that like?
I would have to go back and look specifically at what the question has.
What's that?
For students?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay.
And that's from the students' perspective, so maybe they're really like.
That's a good question.
I can try to find that out. Or you would like to match it. So based on all of that data that we collected, we did a needs assessment to see, based on all this feedback we gathered from students and parents and families, what are some things that we are seeing that we need to include in this? Remember the guidance plan for sharing today? And so our data review included academic data. So we looked at state assessment scores and then our local assessment data. We also looked at school culture and climate, behavioral mental health. By looking at those empathy interviews, the story circles, I will see data results from the survey. And then for college and career preparation, we looked at, I think it's all the things that we just shared. As well as looking at. So based on our needs assessment, these were the priorities that emerged. So these are priorities are really just aligned with, they align really nicely with our strategic plan because a lot of the work we did in our strategic plan with a lot of the needs assessment as well. So it kind of stuck with our same three focus areas of our strategic plan. So we had instructional development and engagement. Our reading and math scores have been slow to rebound post pandemic. So we're still seeing that opportunity gap for our local group of students in reading and math. And then for the workforce, the themes from the staff survey kind of indicated the need for ongoing professional development and support to contribute to the job satisfaction. You kind of saw that, so I'm sure we do. And then in building relationships, some of the themes from the community engagement focused on community, we heard a lot about sense of belonging and about inclusivity. Like wanting to feel included. And also the need for staff to support students with academic and socially emotional growth. So that need for more support staff. So these are intended outcomes. Go to that slide. So intended outcomes reflect the priority and work we are setting following our plan. These are our long-term goals or outcomes. So the first one, we added, because we had to have one around literacy. So our first one is implement evidence-based research to align literacy programs through our new curriculum. A streamlined response intervention process. Evidence-based intervention programs, instructional strategies that are equitable across the whole town and all communities. Our second one is to develop and implement a comprehensive, multi-tiered system of supports for socially-emotional learning at Helen Health. That one is the same outcome we had in our last integrated guidance application. And then the next slide, these ones are also the same as our previous one. Ensure that students have access to instructional materials, excuse me, instructional practices. Standard-based instructional materials that integrate respectful consideration of culture, disability, race, gender, language. By providing ongoing professional learning cooperation support resources. And that fourth one is the same. Implement K-12 supports for students and families, especially in our local groups, to increase regular attendance, student and parent engagement, school-to-school partnerships and communication, and involve accessibility with school and district programs. So these key stretches will help us achieve our intended outcomes. So as part of our integrated guidance plan that we have for you. For outcome number one around early literacy, we have, we're using like funds for instructional coaching. And then support for the new core curriculum implementation. Outcome number two, which the focus was around SEL and Helen Health. Our plan is to continue providing certified councilman staff, the members that we are now. Also the addition of our attendance staff that we have for the district. Bridges program, bridging most of the time school. Accurate qualification day, and then we have our IM software, which is a database of all the attribute information. Outcome three around instructional practices. EMT staff, additional PLD staff, so we have one board to teach in each building. Some of our instructional coaches, high schools, the success staff. Summer school and credit funding activities, and then dual credit math courses at the high school. And then outcome number four was around student and family support. So we have family liaisons, behavior specialists, lower in class at the elementary level, special education staff, and then high school progress reports, like you just wrote, this is DT. So these are the key investments that we are proposing in our plan. Some of them I just shared with you. But Mindy also has as part of the, after the application is a document that kind of specifies exactly what we're setting. Those on, but again, the focus is on staff. So councilman staff, teachers, valuable family liaisons. Our student engagement specials relevant to attendance. Some are programs, EMT staff, special education staff, instructional coaches. Which we, you know, when we were looking at and we discussed with that, something came up a lot was we need that support staff to help our students. And that's kind of the priority that we see and where we are. So this one is going to be around the performance measures that we have to have as part of the integrated guidance. So we have all these plans and we have all these outcomes that are all measured whether we are meeting these outcomes. So there are distinct performance measures for integrated guidance, high school success and eligibility requirements. State CT Perkins, we don't do that, right? Federal school improvement accountability data. I'm going to share number four with you, the longitude and longitude performance growth targets. And then local optional metrics. Those would be our indicators for the strategic plan that we will be sharing the case. We have our primary and junior specific indicators. And then we have a progress matrix. So longitude and longitude growth targets. Basically, we could share with you kind of what they are right now, but they're not, we're not having to improve them today. Basically, once our plan's approved, the state will sit down, that's a group run just to make sure. And then they'll come to you for approval of your take. So we did meet with someone from ODE the other day, Linda and I met. And kind of made our draft, the ones that we're going to share with each day. So we basically have to have the following metrics. We have to have third grade reading proficiency, ninth grade on track, regular attendance rates, four-year on-time graduation and five-year completion rates. So those are the five requirements. But like I said in that little box, it says we can also have our own optional metrics and those will be the ones we'll share with you. So I'm going to share some really good, I had to share this graph with you because I was like, these graphs are really great. So the red line on this graph is the state average. And as you can see, we are above the state average for both our, the yellow lines are all students and then the gray lines are our local groups, kind of our local groups. And so we are above the state average, which is good to see. And the dotted lines that you're seeing, those are our growth targets. And the goal is obviously to close the gap. So the goal is to see the yellow and the green lines getting closer and closer together the farther I'm getting. So we have to get some improvements if you look at the side. I started with pre-pandemic because the numbers are important to see where we'll be at before the pandemic and now where we're at now. So you can see for regular ten years before the pandemic, we were running 5%. And then 22, 23 after the pandemic, we moved down to 64%. But we are slowly going back up again. And our goal is by the end of 2930 to be back up at least 79.23%.
Why is our 2024, 25 goal lower than last year's?
So basically, when we started the integrated guidance last time, we had to set these longitudinal goals and we can't change them. So that goal was previously set out in the beginning. And so basically, we just.
So we've surpassed our goal?
We just did, we are, we are.
We're over two years.
And then the goal for 2930 was based on kind of where we had set goal before and then we can come out from there. So the nice thing is we can all go above our goal. This is our third grade reading. The only concern really on this one is our, is our component of local groups. But otherwise, all students, the yellow were looking really, I don't know, I would say really strong or above the state average of 39%. This is an area that you know, you're maybe belonging on the science of reading, having curriculum adoption. Egg juice, use math, listening. These numbers are also based on his mother about the state. So it's a different kind of assessment. We've been pretty steady pre-pandemic and post pandemic around 48%. So I do think these scores will go up with our, so hopefully. Ninth grade on track, we're looking very strong. State average is 83.16%. And our, last year was 95% for Astoria. Our final grade average is 82%. Where our core available, not comparable to just 95%. So we're already kind of above that. The goal for 2930 is 95% because they won't let you say a goal higher than 95%.
If I mean, this is our smart points verification there. We're actually better than 95%. They just won't allow you to go higher as a goal of 95% or they will report the goal as higher than 95%.
Seriously?
Well, the purpose is. 97.5% on track to graduate, which means that there were only four students who weren't. And they feel that that's a violation of confidentiality because the narrow population too, too small of a group. So they just say 95% and that's, that's the max. Even if you got 100%, they would say 95%.
This wasn't all like 97.
We were 97.5.
Yeah.
That's true. If it's a hundred, then yeah.
Yeah.
And you could, but if you're 99.2.
96 to 99.9, nope.
Great, next one. Four-year graduation rate, again, we are well below the state average. Pretty close between our all students and our local group of students. Our goal for this year is 86.28%. Last year, we ran 91.4%, so looking good to leave that goal. And our last one is five-year computers. Local room, not quite at the state average, but with our goal, we should be getting there. We actually already met our goal for this year because we can't go below the four-year completion rate. So our goal this year is 89.14%, but we're already above that, so. And then the goal for 2930 at the end is that 95%. So we will be bringing this back to you later on, once they've been finalized by the state for formal on hold from campus. So basically, what happens next? So you can see we are here. So public review and board approvals today. We submitted to ODE, it's due by April 30. They will do their intake, ODE does the plan and budget review. I can't remember what Q and P is. Quality assurance, learning panel will occur simultaneously at the ODE plan and budget review for randomly selected number of districts. So we have to be a children of that, so maybe just as a composed of community members who observe as a quality measure overseeing the review process. Very large information. And then, then we'll come together and develop, co-develop the goals we just shared with you. Grant agreements are sent out and then the board presentation, public review will include those longitudinal goals. Are there any other questions? In your packet, have the actual application, the questions and answers that we are submitting as well as the touches? Sure, you can go ahead with that. I'm not going to read all. It's for you. Thank you.
Thank you. But I wanted to thank Mrs. Sparks. She put a lot of time and work into this, the support of the other administrators, so thank you.
All right. Item four, district equity committee update.
So since we last met, the things that we told you we were going to do, we've done. This particular document is a one-pager that brings out the requirements for where we're at as far as recruiting members who may want to participate in the equity committee. It, the information on this page, we have taken and I put into a slideshow that's a little, it's a little grittier, to be honest. But it's the same information. So different ways for people to access it, whatever works better for them. The slideshow that we developed is designed to be used with community members, faculty, families, just as a way to access and explain what we're doing. Embedded in all of them with the vision, the mission, the equity statement, and then the lights that we use to evaluate our decisions and practices. Can we keep going? So here is the what is it and why? And who are we looking for to join this committee? And then what is the commitment? You know, what, what are we talking about? Are we talking about weekly meeting? Are we talking about? So trying to provide some clarity to what people would be signing up for. And then I believe the following slide will be your resources. So if somebody wants to take a deeper dive to better understand the Senate bill, it's linked there. The strategic plan is there because these, it's all aligned. And then the actual application is embedded into that. It's a Google form that will be coming up so you can see the questions. Are there questions about that process or the purpose of where we're at? So the planning committee that's working with myself and Ms. Sparks consists of members of the previous steering committee, the equity people that have said, yes, I want to be part of this. They're volunteering their time and experience. And so we came together and they formulated these questions. We took a couple samples from other districts that have already had this because of the requirements per size. Depending on the size of your district, how quickly you have to have this implemented. So I mean, just general identification, like who you are and your email contactings. But then the questions that we formulated, one is optional, the others are required. So if, where is that? Keep going there for me. The one that asks specifically if you feel comfortable identifying yourself and who, how you identify, what groups you represent, that is optional. It's not a requirement for the application. And this will go out again to all of the different groups of people that we're seeking input from. Any questions about the application or feedback for the team? Recommendations? Recommendations? How many board members are you, do you know? So the discussion that we had as a planning team and, you know, as far as like finding out if there's nothing. We're bringing it all back around, but what we would, what we had talked about based on the recommendations and guidance from the state is you want to kind of look at between like 12 to around 12 folks. But we want to make sure that we have representation from our families. And so one of the things that they said is you can have a board member serving alongside of the, like for example, the superintendent almost as consultants. That they would participate and answer questions and be resources, but more in a consulting role. Because we do, we do have to bring somebody from the budget committee, if not this round, then the following round, depending on who applies, obviously, right? So we were thinking the team and the conversation was taking one. You know, when board member and.
Is that the thought because it comes back to us?
It comes back, it comes back and then you would be able to share your experiences and provide additional information if there's questions. And also be able to provide information to the committee that they might have as to policies or why certain decisions were made. Make it a two-way, making load information to the board and from the board back to the committee.
Ask a question, maybe not, is maybe.
Future.
But so like your orientation meeting and stuff in June and like going forward. Who is like responsible? Who's the leader?
That would be Mrs. Sparks.
Okay.
So that's another recommendation within the guidance is you have to identify what kind of support you're needing from the district in order to ensure the committee can function. And so I think it's important to have an administrator there that is acting as a facilitator to get agendas ready, to schedule reserved times and to help facilitate the meeting. In the June meeting part of what needs to be accomplished is identifying roles of the members. And so some of those responsibilities may shift around, but for now, having Stephanie available to facilitate that. So I'm, I'm doing the plan again, but I will be returning it to the Sparks when we're done with this process.
And so aside from the application, is there any other interaction with potential applicants? Like to legally talk with them?
So that's the process that we have to decide. And part of where we're at with that is determining how many applicants we get, right? So this particular, this is, and I shouldn't have used, I should have used a different word than approval. I would say feedback or, because it's not something that you're voting on. But we wanted you to see where we were at before we took the next steps. You know, if we, if we only have a few applicants, obviously, we're going to go through and take a look and those kinds of things. But then the process for selecting them would be through the board. And would you like them to come to the meeting and you could ask them any questions, you know, those kinds of. So those details, we haven't sort of been at that part yet. That would be part of our next steps.
So and then, I don't know, I think I mentioned this last time we were talking about this. But like, if I'm applying for this, I want to know what I'm doing, right? And like, still, the first sentence, the only thing that really says anything is to advise the school board and district superintendent of impacts on educational equity, both positive and negative, as it relates to policies and practices within the given district. It's super ambiguous to me, plus I feel like it's written at a level of like super educated person. And like, if we're trying to gather a group that is rep, yeah, diverse, like. I mean, I'm educated, I have no idea what the heck that means, like.
I don't disagree with you. And so if you go down to the 13th of March. We'll be starting and it's assigned some community outreach where we're going to go meet with folks. And then they explain and answer questions and take away some of the ODE language. To try to bridge that.
So I'm still, I guess, in questioning like what they're doing.
Well, and that's where we're at, is this is a work in progress and we haven't had it before. Like our previous equity committee was a steering committee in order to get the equity review finished.
Right.
So this is a new process. What we have sketched out is it will be a line of communication, much like from the board to the committee and from the committee to the board, but also from the committee back to the building level. Because each building has an equity committee. And to be able to support each other in that work. So this is a practice or a policy or an initiative. And what steps do we need to put through before we make a decision? A real life example, some of our teachers recently went to a PD this week, correct? And they were told some information about our ELD students and their schedules and the requirement that they have opportunity to take the same electives as students who may not be receiving those services. And so being up with a brand, something like that for our equity committee to make sure that the decisions we're making are not limiting access. So work such as that, but not having had this in place. That's how I would envision it and see, okay.
Yeah. I did, I, yeah. From the law of reservation about how, if you're not giving a clear definition of what their roles are, that. And again, I think I said this before, but that that can become like, like a complaint meeting, right? And just like, or an agenda meeting, like where someone comes in with a specific agenda that they're going to address. And so I think like, it's probably very important when you're having those meetings that, that the roles and responsibilities of this committee are clearly defined. And I know that, and the fact that this hasn't been around makes it even more difficult. But just that that's like, there's.
So I think I'm understanding your question a little better with what you just said. And so the other component that I haven't shared is the same planning committee is now working with us to go through a strategic plan and put it through the equity lens. Because that will be the foundation of the work they're doing. Is around anything that is in our strategic plan, because that is really our work. So with what you, how you rephrase that question, I better understand what you're saying. It will be to support the work of the district with the strategic plan. Making sure that our decisions and practices are equitable. Well, and if you're looking at the Senate bill, like in the introduction, it says, these, these are meant to help school leaders identify what helps or hinders the success of students who, who have been historically excluded, impacted marginalized or disturbed. So I imagine the equity committee would be like looking at our underserved population data and seeing where we're falling behind and then looking at the practices that we use. I mean, that's what I assume they would be doing. To see how we can, and also looking for the areas that we're, you know, making great improvements on. And what are we doing there kind of thing? That would be my imagining. Well, it, it's all kind of married together with like the integrated guidance where we look at the focal groups. And then with the strategic plan and all the different areas. As far as a year-long roadmap for the upcoming school year, I don't have that.
Yeah, no, and I, I guess more about the process like to, I, I, I mean, just as a citizen, like if I were a citizen applying for this, I don't know. I just want to make sure that it's because it's somewhat ambiguous because we don't have a history of this. And it's new, that it is, there is a little bit of definition to the role and responsibility of someone that's going to join this committee so that, I don't know, like.
So I think maybe to address that, adding another slide in that committee presentation with more information about the strategic plan and the role of what this committee would be doing to support some of those focus areas and.
Yeah.
Maybe just as a suggestion on the application, there is, the, the question at the bottom is, you know, what are the challenges? That may, might be a good question to see what people say, what are our strengths in equity as well? We're not just focusing on that.
Yeah, no, that's great. Anything else?
Does the timeline work for you guys as far as rolling it out, opening up the application? I'll make those additions to the application and the slide and I can reshare it with you if you'd like to see it. So how does the people apply and then?
We are making this project?
We are going to make the school board appointments.
So in May, okay.
We thought if we are able to send this out at the end of this month, make the revisions to things that need to happen, have it open for a month, be able to sort through it as a planning team, make recommendations. And then it comes to you for your review.
And we need to have a budget committee member.
We don't have to this cycle, but we would next cycle.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. I have one more question.
For when we're appointing, is it just board that are on that panel to appoint? Or are there other staff members on that panel?
My, my understanding from reading the Senate bill is it's the superintendent and the school board. I'll let make that decision. We'll obviously go through the applications and get them organized and all the things. We'll meet with Mr. Hoppus because, well, so given the timeline, and he would go through it and meet with you. But if Mr. Hoppus isn't back yet, then it would be me, we would have this conversation.
And this would be done in the same way that the budget committee is.
By distance. I think it's the process that we need to see, to kind of think of it work well. And I think a lot of it depends on how many applicants we get. Sort of the questions that the planning team asked me is, well, what if we don't have all the people we want by June? And I said, well, we keep working on it and we can help people, you know.
Is there a criteria in the bill saying how many?
They give different recommendations and there's pluses and minuses, but there is not a requirement for a set number. The only requirement as to membership is the budget committee person. And that is when you have a, we need a budget committee that can assign that duty. Or we may have a budget committee person that wants to apply and that would be great. And then the representation across our community serving historically underserved or. So no, there's not a separate, there's the.
With this space, because we're not going to get in trouble. A certain number of.
No, no.
Okay, anything else?
So with that, we will adjourn the study session and we'll be back at seven o'clock for our regular board meeting.